Good evening. This special meeting of the seventy-first term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off our cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight, we will have a moment of silence instead of the invocation. And in this moment of silence, I want us to remember Mr. John Patarakis, who has done so much for the city of Baltimore.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Reisinger, Costello, Clark. Mr. President, we will call him.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general proceedings from the September nineteenth City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
It's motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to five of the agenda. Before we go into introductions of the bills, I want everybody to pay attention. Before we go into introductions of the bills, I'm being honored tonight at six o'clock, so I'm asking that we not do any announcements. We're going to do the committee announcements, and then I'm going to call for adjournment because I have to be there on time. I hope everybody heard that. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven six two, Commemorative Days Indigenous Peoples' Day, ordinance for the purpose of declaring the second Monday in October of each year to be Indigenous Peoples' Day and requiring the mayor to proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October of each year. Sponsor Scott.
Please note, Council President Young is co-sponsor. Any more co-sponsors, Councilman Reisinger, Councilwoman Holton. That's the Indigenous Peoples' Day, changed it from Columbus Day. Shaun Green Middleton, Councilman Nick Mosby, Chair Recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this is a simple fix to something that we should have done a long time ago. We all know the true history of Christopher Columbus.
Brandon, can't hear you. Can you use Councilman Henry's mic?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this is something that we should have done a long time ago. We know the true history of Christopher Columbus. We know that if he was alive today, we would call him a terrorist, and we would compare him to other terrorists. So, if we're going to, in this rare instance where we can correct history and have our young people learn in the city of Baltimore and know in the city of Baltimore that their government wants to honor history as it actually happened and not as it has been told, this is something that we should do and do post haste. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven six three, Retail Business District Semi-Annual Fee Collection, ordinance for the purpose of changing the collection period of the license fee for the York Road retail business district from annual to semi-annual, clarifying conform related provisions providing for a special effective date and relating to the purposes and operations of the retail business district. Sponsor Henry.
Please note that Councilman Craft is a co-sponsor. Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. For over a year now, the businesses along the York Road corridor have been ramping up to transform their retail business district license area into a business improvement district, and the hope is that legislation will go in early in the next term to make that a reality. However, since the existing RBDL fees are collected for an entire year on January one, we're going to try to change the billing for the license fee to semi-annual so that businesses will only pay it for the first half of the year in the hopes that the new business improvement district can be up and going for the second part of the year. And I've spoken to the chair about making sure that we can get a speedy hearing to get this taken care of before the finance department sends out the bills. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution sixteen dash zero three one seven R, condemning violence and hate speech. Resolution for the purpose of condemning violence and hate speech, expressing solidarity with Muslims and all those targeted for their ethnicity, race, or religion, and categorically rejecting political tactics that use fear to manipulate voters or to gain power or influence. Sponsor Henry.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I circulated a copy of this resolution to all members earlier this week. I'm starting to lose track of which day of the week it is, I'm sorry. I circulated a copy. Many of you also signed on to a letter of support that was done several weeks ago. This has become a national movement to fight Islamophobia, and I'm asking this council to join with approximately three dozen other cities across the country in not just doing individual letters of support, but taking a stand as the entire city against this. So, I would ask not only for additional co-sponsors, but also if we could suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption tonight.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of suspending the rules to adopt this resolution? Somebody's second, I thought you seconded, right? Okay. Please note that Councilman Costello, Councilwoman Holton, Welch, Councilwoman Clark, Council Vice President Reisinger, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Mosby, Councilman Scott, Councilman Craft, Councilman Kern, Councilwoman Spector. He already did it second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move this resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries, and this resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution sixteen dash zero three one eight R, United States Department of Justice Consent Decree with the City of Baltimore Regarding the Baltimore Police Department. Resolution for the purpose of calling on Department of Justice to include certain provisions in its consent decree with the City of Baltimore to ensure that the agreement includes the best thoughts and suggestions from all in Baltimore. Sponsor Scott.
Co-sponsors, Councilwoman Holton, Councilman Costello, Councilwoman Clark, Councilman Welch, Council Vice President Reisinger, Councilman Craft, Councilman Kern, Councilwoman Spector, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Mosby, and Councilman Henry. Chair Recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, we all know that this consent decree is upcoming, but I think it's very important that, as the closest representatives to the citizens of Baltimore, elected representatives, that we say our piece, or let the will of the people be known. We've had discussions with community groups, and I know we all have heard from our citizens about what should be in the consent decree. So, this resolution just bears out some of the stuff. None of it is earth-shattering or groundbreaking, but the stuff that we must have to do, and quite honestly, that consent decree or not, that we must push for ourselves here in the city council. So, that includes increased civilian oversight, release of names of the officers mentioned for civil rights violations in the report, increased police department transparency, community policing, training and policy reform, officer support investments, and technology investments. And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to move for suspension of rules to immediately adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of adopting Resolution sixteen dash zero three one eight R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, this resolution is adopted. Thank you, Councilman. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Motion by Kern, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, this calendar is approved. Chair Recognize Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I move that we read short titles for second and third reader.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of short reading of the titles for the remainder of the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries, short reading. Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven five five, Supplemental State Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, one million four hundred fifty-seven thousand six hundred forty dollars.
Chair Recognize Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a rather customary transfer in relation to a grant that the city was able to be awarded, and so we're just allocating, making the provision for the funds to be available for use. I report the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves this bill, moves to third reader.
City Council Resolution sixteen dash zero two eight eight R, Traffic Camera Revenue for Crossing Guards.
Chair Recognize Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a resolution looking at how we might allocate some of the revenue from the new camera program to support the funding of crossing guards in our schools. We recommend favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this resolution is adopted. Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six four eight, Street Encroachment, One West North Avenue.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September twenty-ninth, the council's Housing and Community Development Committee settled a lot of family business. We will be bringing many of these out today on second reader. First is sixteen dash zero six four eight, Street Encroachment. We would ask for a favorable report. Can I move this with a favorable report? I'm sorry.
Just have amendments.
There are amendments on members' desks, so I need to move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Welch. All those in favor of these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, the bill is amended. Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
I move the bill favorable with amendments.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves this bill, moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven two zero, City Streets Opening Portion of a Twelve-Foot Alley.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Yes, I move this bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion approves this bill, moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven two one, City Streets Closing A Portion Of A Twelve-Foot Alley.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven two four, Franchise Comcast of Baltimore City LLC.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Ms. President. I do want to take a moment and correct some misunderstandings about this bill that have been out there in the general discussion. Just so that everyone knows at home, and if you do, you're watching this on Comcast, just so that everyone knows, the cable franchise that we do with Comcast periodically, the last one, the one that's expiring, was for twelve years. This next one will be for ten years. This is not an exclusive contract. This is not an exclusive franchise. If somebody else wanted to come in and offer telecommunications services, they are free to come to the city and propose that. We are not keeping FiOS or any other provider from coming into the city by having this franchise with Comcast. Also, this franchise regulates cable television only. It does not and cannot by federal law regulate broadband service. With those two important disclaimers attached, I move the Comcast franchise renewal favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, you still want to say something. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four one, City Streets Opening A Portion Of Creek Alley.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Ms. President. Move this favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four two, City Streets Closing A Portion Of Creek Alley.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this with a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four four, City Streets Opening A Portion Of South Eden Street And A Portion Of Allessana Street.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this with a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four five, City Streets Closing A Portion Of South Eden Street And A Portion Of Allessana Street.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this bill with a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four seven, City Streets Closing A Portion Of East Fairmount Avenue.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this bill with a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Resolution sixteen dash zero three one three R, Informational Hearing, Homeless Outreach Efforts.
Chair Recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this with a favorable report.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
Thank you.
Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six nine two, Property Assess Clean Energy Loan Program.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this bill was heard on September the twenty-seventh. That was the continuation of an earlier hearing September thirteenth. Before I move the amendments, I'd like to defer to the sponsor, Councilman from the eleventh district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank all of my colleagues for co-sponsoring it, all fifteen of us, and also want to thank the administration for working very diligently with me on this legislation for over the past year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, I move the amendments on the members' desk.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill is amended. Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven one eight, Ticket Sales, Ticket Purchasing Software.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill was also heard on September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. There's an amendment on the members' desk, move the amendment.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill is amended. Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven three six, Tax Credits High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill was also heard on September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. There's amendment on the members' desk, move the amendment.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves, I mean, this bill is amended. Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven three nine, Environmental Control Board Board Composition.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, this bill was heard on October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four zero, Employees Retirement System And Elected Officials Retirement Systems Clarification And Modifications.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill was heard, this bill was heard on October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. I move to hold this bill until October twenty-fourth, City Council Meeting.
Second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of holding this bill until the October twenty-fourth Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes, this bill will be on second reader after October twenty-fourth Council Meeting.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four three, Sale Of Property, A Portion Of The Former Bed Of Creek Alley.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, this bill was also heard October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four six, Sale Of Property, A Portion Of South Eden Street And A Portion Of Allessana Street.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, yet another bill heard on October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven four eight, Sale Of Property, Former Bed Of A Portion Of Delaney Valley Road.
Chair Recognize Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final bill from October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Move it favorably.
Second by Council Vice President Reisinger. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader. Land Use And Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five seven five, Resoning, fifteen twenty through fifteen thirty, Beeson Street, sixteen hundred Beeson Street, and twelve twenty Towson Street.
Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of moving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair Recognize Councilman Reisinger.
There's amendments to this bill. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill is amended. Chair Recognize Council Vice President Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six eight six, Mated Parking, Multi-Space Methods.
Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill is amended. Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six eight eight, Resoning, three twenty South Highland Avenue.
Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair Recognize Councilman Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six eight nine, Resoning, three hundred North Warwick Avenue.
Chair Recognize Council Vice President Reisinger.
Move finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Welch. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Welch. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, the bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six nine five, Plant New Development Amendment One, New Shallow Baptist Church.
Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
They're finding the facts on this one? Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero six nine six, Plant New Development Amendment One, Kennedy Krieger Institute.
Chair Recognize Council Vice President Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of moving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven zero seven, Resoning, fourteen ten North Monroe Street.
Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of adopting the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair Recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approves, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero seven zero nine, Plant New Development Amendment Port Covington.
Chair Recognize Council Vice President Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving the amendments to this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Councilman, you calling me? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0717, Guilford RPP.
I'm sorry. The motion was to amend it, and we got the votes to amend it. Now we're going to move the amended bill. I'm sorry.
Are we going back to 709?
Yes. Yes, because I got, I had a little brain.
So we got to make a motion and move the bill favorable as amended?
As amended.
Yeah.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is good, and we moved this bill to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0717, Guilford RPP area amendment.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
There's amendments to this bill. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving the amendments to this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This bill is amended. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0730, zoning conditional use, amending ordinance 01-236.
Chair recognized, Councilman Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0732, rezoning 325 West Baltimore Street.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving these amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0734, rezoning certain properties in the Remington Central Business Area.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0750, plant new development amendment, Mount Washington Mill.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The bill is amended. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion encourages, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0751, rezoning 300 South Patterson Park Avenue.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor adopting the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0752, rezoning 900 Fleet Street.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0757, plant new development designation, Northwood Commons.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ross Singer.
Move the finding of facts.
Excuse me for a minute. Wait a minute. Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Ross Singer.
Move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All, I mean, second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor approving these amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading. Chair recognized, Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I want to thank the chairman and the land use committee for getting this through at this term. This is the second most significant zoning issue I've done in 21 years down here. Stadium Place was the first, but this Northwood Commons is the revitalization of Northwood Shoping Center in conjunction with the 100 million-plus mortgage estate development at the west end of the Shoping Center. And I want to thank the council ladies from the 14th District who's been with us every step of the way. Mr. President, I want to thank your office and the land use committee, we get this done, and hopefully we'll see a new Northwood Shoping Center.
Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0254R, implementing law enforcement, assisted diversion in Baltimore.
Chair recognized, Councilman Branch. Mr. President, I'd like to give the floor to the councilman of the 4th District, please. Chair recognized, your bill, Councilman Henry. Mr. Chairman, we recommend favorable. Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor adopting this resolution say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved, the resolution is adopted. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 13-0242, Arts and Entertainment Districts, Property Tax Credits, Admission and Amusement Tax Exemptions.
Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this bill with a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 16-0700, Payment in lieu of Taxes, Ward 7, Section 4, Block 1567, Lot 51A, and Ward 7, Section 3, Block 1586, Lot 2, Eager Square.